Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day in the city in which we live. Guide us this afternoon as we make our decisions to Christ and everybody. This is the twelve noon, October twelfth, twenty twenty one work session for the City of Nunnan. And I'm gonna call on Mr. Phillips to kick us off. Start with me.
Absolutely. Appreciate you coming, council members. Obviously, a follow up from our council item two weeks ago where we started discussing the resolution that was going to establish the bucket, the distribution of funds into the various buckets. We had some good discussion that day, but obviously, we needed to get greater into the weeds. So that's what we're gonna do today. We set aside potentially up to a couple of hours so that we can actually, you know, get deeper into the weeds and discuss the history of the ARP Act, some of the guidelines, some of the eligible uses, some of our potential strategies. So what we're gonna do before we actually get into those discussions is I'm gonna ask Andrew Moody to give us that overview, that background, that history. Help us, you know, educate ourselves. If you got any questions, feel free to ask before we actually get into the discussion of the funding and the different potential programs that you may feel is a priority. So.
Okay, Andrew, appreciate you doing this today. And let's do it this way for the council, if that's okay with you, Andrew, for your presentation. If you say, if Andrew says something that prompts a question from you, let's don't wait till the end. Just go ahead and interrupt.
Yes.
Is that okay?
Absolutely.
Ask the question, we'll move on.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
I tried to keep this as brief as I possibly could, just to keep them going. I mean, to cover all the details we need to, but what we're going to.
Is she working, Andrew?
They're doing it. It hasn't worked in three weeks.
The pointer?
Okay. She got it working.
Okay, so ARPA. ARPA was passed in March of this past year. It's designed to be a recovery effort for COVID-19 pandemic and also lead some long-range planning efforts into the future of what we plan over the next five years roughly. The City of Nunnan received seven point seven million dollars in July of this year, and in July of 2022, will receive an estimated additional seven point seven million dollars. The city reserves all the discretion to spend the money however they want to, barring the specific categories outlined by the Treasury.
I'll sit over here and hit your button for a second.
Just so real quick, on that slide, the second tranche, we really have no idea how much that is. So seven point seven is, it's not necessarily half.
Right.
But it's estimated to be half, maybe?
So it's estimated to be half or the other half of what you received in your first tranche. However, Treasury still reserves the right to change how this funding is delivered at any point in time. Right now, we're working off the interim final rule, which is, I'll get to that in a minute. But at any point in time, Treasury can release new guidance and change the way that the cities receive funds or the change the way that actually the states send funds to the cities. So right now, yes, we're expected to receive seven point seven, but six months from now, that could very well change.
Okay. Thank you.
How about the guidelines on what you could spend it on?
The guidelines for what we could spend it on could potentially change at some point. At the same time that Treasury releases new guidance, we could have additional categories added. I don't expect any categories to be removed, but yes, at some point in time, they can squeeze it down to just a select few, or they can expand it even more. All right, so this slide will, it discusses the guidelines to spending the funds. So all funds need to be obligated by December thirty first, 2024. So we have roughly three years or so, a little bit more, to spend these funds or to at least obligate them, but we have till 2026 to actually expend all the funds. So, and that kind of leaves some room, some wiggle room if you decided to do a Go Funding for certain projects. If you were gonna construct something and you were gonna pay as you go, if that project was gonna take you for two years, that leaves you some wiggle room. It is highly recommended by Treasury to take time. Don't, they don't want anyone to rush. Don't make any brash decisions to just drop money anywhere. Take the time to actually think about where you wanna put it and conduct long-range planning so you can be the most effective use. So as I stated just a few minutes ago, the interim final rule is kind of like that narrative guidance that gives me the opportunity as the one who will be doing the reporting, the opportunity to kind of have better, a better understanding of what exactly is in the legislation. It's no different, truthfully, from what the actual legislation is. It just more kind of provides examples and direct information that would not normally be included in typical legislation. So for purposes of picking categories, the interim final rule really has no play. It just further defines everything that's already outlined. So for reporting, we will be required to submit annual expenditure reports that will detail basically every single detail from the amounts expended to the reason why it was selected, all the evidence used to make that decision. We were supposed to submit one at the end of this month. However, Treasury has decided that that was too short of a time period and has extended it all the way until, I believe, April, yes, April thirtieth of next year is when our first report will be due. And that period will cover from July when we received this first tranche of money to that point, to March thirtieth, actually. And then subsequently, every year after, it'll be around the same time. So since they've changed this date, I don't imagine that they're gonna switch back to October, so it'll probably be March thirtieth of every single year. So now we move into the Treasury-approved categories. I know this is kinda, kinda small, but this is the public health category. This category was set aside designed to be response to COVID, and most of it still, as you can see, all the subcategories that are provided are in response to COVID. It is not limited to vaccinations, testing, and so forth. It can be used, as you can see at the bottom, for mental health substances or mental health interventions, substance abuse, and other health services at the discretion of the city, so long as we can provide evidence to why it's, why we used it, Treasury generally will support it. Some of the important things that we can take away, I do have on this slide that the governor has established a payroll grant that we'll be using for first responders. So that's coming in the works, just waiting on the state to actually send over terms and conditions so we can begin the application process.
Is the, is, real quick.
Go ahead.
Is that governor's grant fund, is that also ARPA money, or is that state money?
It will be state ARPA money.
So it's ARPA money funnel to the state?
So it is, it is ARPA, yes. It's just coming directly from the state.
Okay, okay, gotcha. And a quick question, I see number one point seven there.
Yes.
Plant changes to public facilities that respond. I think that was the one. Would that cover something like a better filtration system in City Hall and the different in the police station, you know, the, those places where we have filtration to actually get a good quality filter, you know, filtration going on?
I believe so. That, I wanna say that that was one of the recommended or one of the questions that was asked in the Treasury developed FAQs that they have not updated since July. But someone did ask about filtration, and they, I believe, they did say that filtration is fine because it would serve a purpose as improving air quality.
Okay. And then would that pay for, could I, you know, like, depending on what kind of system it is, ongoing maintenance, at least up until 2026, I guess, right?
I believe that that should, that should work. I don't see any, any reasons why it wouldn't.
Okay.
For that.
Thank you.
Next. You have questions, Ron?
And this category, so this one gets a little bit more elaborate, and this one is definitely much smaller than, from what you can see. But this category covers all purposes of negative economic impacts and services that you can provide to households and education. What we are thinking and what kind of was evident in the survey that we received when I first came in, nonprofits and small business assistance is what's gonna be, is gonna better serve the City of Nunnan, and every single subcategory that's on this list can be serviced through two general categories of small business assistance and nonprofit assistance. That way, we're not becoming, we're not too elaborate on how we break it down. We can cover it over in two specific categories and then address it through an application process.
So here's a question for you.
Yeah, absolutely.
So you're talking about negative impact.
Yeah.
Anyway, so they've gotta show that they have a negative impact during COVID.
Yes, so Treasury will require, or, and actually, that'll be detailed in the next couple of slides, the state also has an application process that we are building ours off of, and it details that they have to exhibit a certain amount of qualifiers to be able to even remotely qualify for the funding, and then we'll be able to kind of filter through that.
So this is a premium pay line?
So this question goes to the intent of the whole ARPA is to assist the most people?
Yes, absolutely.
In the actual intent?
Yeah.
So with that intent being stated, I see that it can be used for the, in the two, the two, the two-point section there, all sorts of different things, you know, including rent, mortgage, utility aid, cash transfers, you know, on and on. I mean, it's pretty lengthy, it's really small, so I'm trying to see what it says there.
Yeah, it's pretty small.
So.
You understand improvement, so I don't know.
Could this, could this actually be used in order to, again, to keep with the original intent of assisting the most people? Could we use this, these funds to basically knock everybody's tax, property tax bill to zero and use these to supply, to, to cover the cost of basically everybody's city property tax?
So one of the things that's actually specifically mentioned by ARPA is that we're not allowed to touch taxes with ARPA. So we won't be able to do that.
Okay, 'cause I saw it said you can't, you can't do anything with pensions, you know, and that kind of stuff.
Right.
But it does talk about that.
Yes, and the interim final rule does specifically mention avoiding using it for taxes or not using it for taxes as a.
Like supplanting taxes.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I have a question. During our meeting here, would be a possibility to have somebody print this out so we can have it in our desk and be able to read it during this meeting?
Let's see if I may have.
Hi, great, thank you.
Would be a little ready to see it. It's in. I can get it to you.
Here, I'll just forward, I'll forward it to Iris and I'll have her print it.
So I got another question for you. A lot of these items across many of these different broad categories are already covered by the state, a lot of are already covered by the Regional Commission, you know, the state money through the Regional Commission, through other departments. Is, does like the Regional Commission, I mean, I know they're not a government, they are a government entity, but I don't think, they fall under the municipal or the state or the county type governments. Are they receiving any ARPA money?
If they apply through the state, they can receive it. Any governmental entity is eligible for what the state has available currently.
They did not get a direct option.
Okay.
Right.
So they have to actually request it, whereas we get it directly?
Yes, and they will, they will have to apply under the specific categories. They won't just receive general ARPA funds or ARPA funds for anything. It'll be water and sewer, negative economic impacts and.
'Cause it seems like a lot of duplication in many regards.
It is. It, it, it mimics closely what the state is, except it's much smaller, we have more direct impact.
You gotta understand that the interim guidelines are not only written for local municipal government, it's written for state organizations and everyone as well. So certainly, certainly there are overlaps, and if you follow any of the GMA's correspondence that they send out weekly, you will see that they're making recommendations such as for local municipalities, county governments, not to use our ARPA money for any type of rent or mortgage assistance because those programs are already currently available to the state. So they're asking us not to duplicate existing programs, which is what I believe you're saying.
Yeah, and it seemed like whether it was the health, the economic impacts, you know, all these, all these, a lot of these social services are already covered by other monies.
Now we move into premium pay. Premium pay is an option. The Treasury has a line. It has to pay up to addition, an additional pay of up to thirteen dollars per hour. I don't believe that they will allow it to go any more than thirteen dollars an hour. And they are specific guidelines for selecting eligible recipients, and I believe that those would be specifically limited to what's defined as an essential employee if, let's see. Yes, so we can provide private sector grants to other employers to provide to their employees. Otherwise, we would provide it directly to public sector employees, not, not essential employees.
So I have a question about that, then. Have we given any premium pays to any of our employees?
Not with these particular funds. We did give my pay last year with the CARES Act funding, but there has not been any premium pay with these particular ARPA dollars.
So the thirteen, 'cause this only starts, what was the date, the start date for these funds? Does, I don't think there's any overlap, I remember. But anyways, does that, so it says up to thirteen dollars an hour. Would that be in addition to the CARES Act, or is that total thirteen, do you think?
CARES Act money are spent.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
What we did with the CARES Act money, we actually, if you recall, we retrode basically a bonus backwards based upon the amount of time on the job that an essential employee performed. It was not an increase to their hourly rate, which this says is eligible. And most local governments that I know that are doing some type of premium pay with these particular dollars are trying to avoid changing the hourly rate, simply, let's be honest, 'cause once you change the hourly rate, the ability to take it away is very difficult.
It's a pure bonus, it's not a.
Most of them are taking it and trying to develop a bonus situation tied to something as opposed to changing the hourly rate.
Yeah, exactly.
We've talked recently about deficits in retirement funds, is there any way specifically protracted?
Yeah, I looked that up, right, it's specific.
If this can provide any clarification, too, the grant that the state is actually doing for the first responders, they have specifically stated that it is not premium pay, and it is actually being used as, and that's why it was included in the public health category, is being used as response to COVID. So they, they have specifically said no, no premium pay, this is for employees to use this thousand dollars that they're gonna get to pay for services or medical bills that they had during the pandemic.
Yeah, I guess I look at it as possibly more than just first responders.
Right.
You know, but, 'cause our entire city staff has had interactions with the public and had the, you know, the threat of being, you know, the interaction with the whole coronavirus and potentially, you know, staff-wide and.
Just, just another little tidbit of information as it relates to premium pay. Those that were, attended the GMA district meeting last week, you recall that I asked GMA a question at that meeting, and it's whether or not any type of premium pay, whether issued as an hourly structure or as a bonus structure from ARPA funds will count towards the pension calculation. And at that particular meeting, the GMA staff did not have an answer, but I have since received an email from the, from the GMA's attorney saying that yes, any type of pay increase that we give is calculated on their check, would be calculated into the pension calculation.
So bonuses included?
So we, so we can use it to pay, but we can't pay the pension.
Well, one, another question, that question was derived because someone else asked the question, all right, we're getting a thousand dollar grant from the state for a bonus, but we're still having to pay FICA, Medicaid, et cetera, out of that, so is it going to be marked up, you know, seven percent to cover those charges? And the answer was, yes, they're going to do that, I believe, I do believe. But then the follow-up question was, what about the ten, eleven, twelve, fourteen percent of retirement contribution? And the answer was no, they're not going to mark that, cover that.
Is, kind of a, thinking a little outside the box, could you, since you could add in the FICA and all those other taxes, could you add in, make this a special type of bonus pay, where you add in then a contribution, not to a pension or retirement, but where they can make a self-contribution to like an IRA?
That gets very, that gets very complicated because it then becomes their money and I said, and their investment. We have discussed that opportunity with GMA and GMA's folks and sort of agents, changing whether it's a matching fund, but it changes our platform completely, and maybe something we eventually get into, but I think it's a much greater in-depth discussion than just discussing all the money.
All right, thank you.
Okay, and infrastructure. Infrastructure is probably the simplest category out of all of them. It's specifically limited to sewage, stormwater, and drinking water, and broadband. Those can be, those specific uses that are listed on there are all listed on the revolving funds that the state has. That's what Treasury has determined that you have to look at to determine if your use is eligible. Nunnan Utilities has submitted a request, everything that they have requested in there falls under those revolving funds and could be eligible. So this category would more or less just be what you determine could be, what determine, what funding you determine to go in this category.
So like, I had a number five point six there, stormwater.
Yes.
We're all very aware that stormwater has been an issue for us for a very long time. It's getting bigger. I mean, as our city's growing, we're having more development, it's, it's, it's a major issue. I mean, it seems like there's two major issues, roads and stormwater. It seems like objectively, again, take out the, the subjective side of things, objectively, it would make sense to put as much as we can toward our stormwater system to help with that because we know the system is in need of severe repair, right?
Well, I'd like to add on to that a little bit, and, and we've seen this after the tornado, that so much of our canopy and our topography was changed due to the, to that tornado. But I'm just wondering, can we use any of this towards?
I think you gotta be careful here with, with stormwater because clearly, you can make investments in the public infrastructure of stormwater, whether it be our, our drainage lines, our pipes, our large corridors. I do not believe you're gonna find any eligibility to go onto private property and make improvements.
That's what I'm thinking, I mean, we got some places that we haven't fixed. Make some improvements.
But there are, in public infrastructure, there is no doubt to be eligible.
Right.
But to go into someone's backyard to address their drainage complaint with what we all get from time to time?
No.
Obviously, we got our level of extended service policy, and that opens up another door, even if it was eligible. So I would certainly recommend that we stay within the public infrastructure component, that's all we want to do.
Right. Well, and one of the largest projects that we've got facing us with public infrastructure is fifty-seventy's problem, and all of the, what we're gonna have to do to get that water off that lot in public, in the public right-of-way, under the street, into the next storm detention area, wherever we take it, it's quite a huge expense.
Exactly.
And this would qualify for that.
That's a perfect use for it.
And that area where the railroad is, as you go across.
Yeah, that's what I saw.
Yes, all that, I mean, just getting all that water into a drain.
Something I'd like to, something that has been a perennial problem, I know it goes on some private property, but we've had the engineering reports where it would take care of it on the public side, is over around Tuxedo, you know, the, the folks over there have had that problem, it seems like, for, for many years. If there's something we could do on the public side, again, just to, for the, for the drainage over on that side, to me, again, that just makes sense. You know, potentially, I don't know if everything over still water's been fixed yet, you know, all that kind of stuff, just those, those persistent problems that we know have a very large ticket price to them, but we just not, have not been able to address head-on.
So one, a brief bit of research that I've done on the stormwater issue, as y'all bring it up, one of the things that they have recommended is to try, and if you're gonna invest in this, try to invest in what is called green infrastructure, and one of those things includes replanting of trees. Trees are determined to be a stormwater deterrent as well, so as you address the topography issues as a result of the tornado, you have that opportunity to also go through on public areas and replant trees as a means of stormwater retention.
Yeah, that's public.
Yes. Now, you could potentially address the private issue through nonprofit, if you wanted to put money, more money towards nonprofits and that.
Our newly created Plant Nunnan is a big recipient of that money.
Right. And has that engaged the tree commission also? I mean, it seems like we're totally, where's, where's the tree commission in all this?
Tree commission has a member on, on the Plant Nunnan board.
Okay.
Plant Nunnan is not a city organization.
Yep, but where we could use the tree commission for this?
Okay. All right, revenue replacement and administrative costs. So Treasury outlines the obvious administrative costs, and then revenue replacement, that's a very specific calculation that we are using the Carl Vinson Institute to calculate. It will change each year, and it can be addressed at any point in time once we have firm data, but it's based off of the actual total revenues, subtracting the utility costs from the city and then using the set value for counterfactual revenue, which they determine, the council, or, not council, Treasury has determined it to be set at a four point, or four point four percent, I believe, if you fall below that growth rate, and then you calculate it based off of that, and then on the next slide, we'll be able to actually see that calculation, I believe. Nope, next one, actually.
You gonna stay here or go?
Uh, go to the next one. There we go. Okay, so this is the calculator that the Carl Vinson Institute has provided. The numbers are general, a little small on here, but you can see that, I'll walk over here and talk. You begin with the FY seventeen through FY nineteen, actual total revenues. You begin with FY seventeen through FY nineteen, actual total revenues. They calculate your growth rate, your compound growth rate for those years. The city of Nunez was at two point nine percent. Since the Treasury sets a standard percentage calculation, it's actually four point one, not four point four. Treasury's set at four point one. The actual total revenue for the year 2020 was thirty-nine point seven million. The counterfactual growth rate for the city is one hundred point eight percent. The counterfactual revenue the Treasury says we should have is forty point seven million dollars, leaving available funds of one point twenty-one thousand, four seventy-four and seventy-nine cents.
So that would go technically to the general fund if we did that?
Could be used for basically any purposes for, under the general fund.
Yes, these funds are less restrictive of how we use them on the other bodies.
What is restrictive is how much you can use. That is the actual restricted use.
We could reimburse our general fund up to that number.
So what about one, one year?
For one year.
For just the one year. So we could basically put that money into our general fund. Does that money then specifically have to be spent by the 2020, whatever year that was? Or once it's in the general fund, it's kind of ours to sit on and use it as we need?
From what I've seen is for us to use as we need.
Without, without an expiration date.
If you did not want to recalculate in FY twenty-two when you receive the second tranche, you don't have to. It's, you determine what uses you want. If you want to use all that one point, two, one, four seventy-four right off the bat and just put it straight into the general fund, I don't think, there's no objections by Treasury at this point. I haven't seen any.
That would likely be considered expended.
Yes.
But how do you justify the fact that in any particular budget year, we may take eight hundred thousand dollars to unallocated, you know, revenues over expenses? How do you justify that, that eight hundred thousand dollars went part of that one point seven?
Strictly using their calculations.
Yeah, but that's not.
You have some legitimate expenses. Think of, I mean, just, it's not a big number, but you had a lot of expenses.
They're looking at revenue, not expenses.
But you had a lot of expenses related to COVID, in a time of detail from these screens right here to the vast, anything we did that was over and above and all, and you can't detail every bit of that.
Because if you look at an all-year of our revenue over expenses, a good number of that is actually expenditure control. It's a typical revenue category and they put a revenue growth estimator in here. That's why that number is what it does. That doesn't factor in our expenditure control.
So over the course of the next four years?
I understand what you're saying.
So they can't, if they don't factor in expenditure control, they can't come back and say, well, we want the eight hundred thousand dollars back because we took it to unallocated surplus. Okay.
So we're looking over the next four years, potentially five to six million dollars.
Potentially, and that's, the original resolution copy had that reserved eighteen percent in there just to roll over into FY twenty-two for recovery of this year. That's an estimated amount. That's not guaranteed to be at that amount. But based off of what those percentages are and what they estimate that the counterfactual revenue should be, more than likely, it'll be around the same number. Okay, so as I said earlier, when we went over the negative economic impact category, this is where you see that the state has already set up their process. This is open to government entities, nonprofits. Truthfully, any association, there were no real limitations to it. But you can see their negative economic impact category is a specific outlined process where, just like we have suggested as combining small business assistance and nonprofit assistance, they're doing the same thing under one general category. And then this next slide, this might be kind of small and you're printing copies too, but this actually details their specific application process, all the guidelines that are required, any standards that they have to meet, what the qualifiers are, so forth and so on. And the application process that we've developed so far mimics this entirely.
Quick question. This is, the hazardous duty money, kind of revisit that in a moment, but look at this application process. Could we pay hazardous duty? So we paid somebody out of CARES money. Could we theoretically apply for a grant, and as I said, it looks like we're already applying for it, for hazardous duty pay? And also use our money for hazardous duty pay, or is that like double dipping?
You knew about it?
Up to the maximum of thirteen dollars an hour or thirteen hours, thirteen dollars for this money and then the state's, their own criteria?
That's right.
Holy smokes.
When we're talking about thirteen dollars an hour, we're talking about thirteen dollars above what we're already paying.
Above.
Above.
That's more much of, everyone understands.
That is correct.
Yep. Sizable amount of money.
It's had a clue, right? But again, let's go back to what Clea said. You know, you give someone a raise, thirteen dollars an hour, and this money runs out. You're really going to be able to go back to them and say, oh, by the way, we're going to cut your pay thirteen dollars.
And that's, well, that's why it'd be so crucial as, it's a bonus.
Yeah.
And then we can go away after.
Clea, have we, have we looked at, if we do, say, we do a bonus and, you know, the CARES money, the state money? How will that impact our retirement fund? And have we gotten any ballpark figures about how much extra that's going to throw in to our numbers for our annual?
To speak specifically, I can't answer that. But to speak generally, yes, I certainly can. Our, our contribution now is fourteen percent of payroll.
Yeah.
And it's gone from like eight percent of payroll, suddenly crept up now to fourteen percent of payroll. If I remember correctly, I don't have the actuary in front of me, but the average pay for our employees last year was fifty-two thousand dollars and change. So yes, I mean, if you start to give bonuses and potential cost of living adjustments in the 2022 budget, you know, that fifty-two thousand dollar annual salary may end up, you know, jumping to fifty-five, fifty-six, fifty-seven, which has a direct impact in the calculation of our future liability. But have I ran an actuary analysis? Of course, I'm not capable of running it. I'd have to ask somebody to do it. But yes, it would have a direct correlation to your pension contribution.
Correct. Okay, thank you.
Okay, so now, this portion right here, we created this map when we were initially going over the continuation of the link idea after the counties proposed that they were going to do it as well. But this map more specifically outlines and details where those qualified census tracts are here in the city. As you can see, that blue area is quite expansive. So generally, what Treasury has determined is that most expenses within this defined area are qualified uses. And that's almost regardless of what you choose to spend it on. So expending things within a qualified census tract, if you chose to do it with a negative economic impacts, or you chose it to do with, within revenue replacement within that qualified census tract, it's generally going to count.
All right, I have a question. If the county follows through with their portion where they said they were looking at doing some link down there from the fairgrounds to the Brown's Mill battlefield. Please, if you pay attention.
Yes.
Where does that register with that little bottom part that gets out of the blue and goes to the white right at the bottom? Where is that in relation to that?
It's a fairground.
Fairgrounds.
Yeah.
It might be off.
Yeah.
Yeah, that looks like the fairgrounds.
I know where the rest of it is. Down there, where does that end?
The fairgrounds is generally in this location. Brown's Mill is generally...
So we would be awfully close.
In this location.
We'd be awfully, if we ran that piece down there, we'd be awfully close to them.
Down to the city limit.
When we were in the master...
That's out, right?
When we were in the master planning process, this was about as close as we could get to the this leg, which was the city's, to the fairgrounds. Actually, that, that is the actual fairgrounds.
That's the fairgrounds. So we could, theoretically, you could run it through the blue to the fairgrounds almost.
Right, right to the city limit, just about.
So, and let me, let me kind of clarify, not just the link. There is some eligibility for outdoor recreation. And the justification there is actually to mitigate FICA, to get people outdoors into outdoor activities. So there are outdoor recreational opportunities that are certainly available. Inside census tracts, absolutely. But even there's other jurisdictions I know that are potentially contemplating outdoor recreation in other areas.
Green space at Fifty Seventy East Bronx.
I have some questions.
Just for a further bit of clarification.
Got a question here, Claudia.
This section over here on this side of the city, this will have to be revenue replacement. Anything over here in this blue section can qualify under negative economic impact? Sorry, Ms. Jenkins, go ahead.
Question. So my question is, I brought up in the last meeting that we had some nonprofits that were assisting with tornado relief and that the economic negative impact is from COVID-related supply chain cost escalations. So with, with that need that we have in our community, I'm trying to figure out here with the total between the negative impact and the services of disproportionate impact communities, how does that play in and what other eligibilities would fit in with that? Is that solidly where it would be under that bucket?
Trying to think how to answer your question without, I mean, the application process, under that negative economic impact, we would be specifically screening to see if it would impact that area more proportionally than others. And that's actually one of the Treasury recommendations and requirements that you can see on, I don't know if, it might be too small on the list, but there is a star and a carrot denotation on those pieces. And that actually is the determination of where we have to use evidence. So if we're going to use that category, we've got to provide evidence to how we serviced an area that is disproportionately impacted to COVID, but then also in this area exacerbated by the tornado as well.
Are you referring back to the list?
That one?
That one?
Mm-hmm.
That's what I'm thinking.
Yeah. So basically, to qualify for this, you'd have to show that, say, for instance, an area had a high social vulnerability index impacted by the COVID disproportionate from the rest of the community that had the tornado issues as well?
Basically, the tornado issues don't necessarily have to be included. But we would, when we do these application process, we're going to specifically ask for these nonprofit organizations to detail every bit of information that you're asking for. So they need to show us how that community was directly impacted, what are the negative economic, negative economic impacts that they experienced in regard to COVID? And then how they are going to be able to improve that impact.
Okay.
Real quick, Ms. Jenkins, what is, you said a negative social index?
Yeah, the CDC has a measure that they use to kind of grade communities. And the social vulnerability index is what they call it. And we have a few areas in our community that are near the top, which just means they're the worst on that social vulnerability index. Those communities cannot take a disruption, something negative happening to their community. So COVID being one of those and the tornado being another. We have two census tracts, I think it is, that show we have point nine six. The scale is zero to one, one being the worst. We have point nine six in one of those. And then we have point seven, something close to eight, point eight in the other one. And they come right across where the tornado went. And I believe that the CDC and other federal organizations have been on our, have had those neighborhoods on their radar because of COVID's impact on those neighborhoods prior to the tornado. So we have, and they, of course, fit within that blue area as well. They can show that are just having severe impacts from all the compounded issues that have come through.
So if, I got to understand, so the CDC deals with health. So this SVI index, if something negative happens, for whatever reason, means they don't have access to healthcare? Because the CDC is healthcare-related, not, I'm just trying to understand this.
Yeah, I think they, they gave the vulnerability, and listen, I'm not an expert on all of it. This is just what my understanding of it is.
I had zero understanding, so I'm trying to get something here. Yep, thank you.
So my understanding is that they gave the vulnerability index, but it's used across other agencies to make sure that they're addressing those social vulnerabilities during these crises.
So it could be more than just healthcare?
That's right. It's far more than healthcare. So, yeah.
So now we can move into a question and answer situation. Moving to question and answers and discussion.
Okay, Q and A. We've been to Q and A and hearing the time, so.
Right.
And I don't have my packet in front of me, so.
All right, so here's a question, this is a link question. So Mr. Phillips, you might be better able to answer this. So we've completed the blue section, the purple section, phase one, phase two. All the rest that's within the city limits, how many miles have we completed or will have completed? And how many miles are, within the city limits that have not been completed? So we're roughly estimating, what, about one to one and a half million dollars per mile?
It's a little higher than what we said in here a few years ago. And I think we initially threw out a six hundred per mile, then eight hundred thousand per mile. And actually, we've been higher than that. We'll have seven, approximately seven miles completed and everything that we have currently planned from Summer Grove to downtown. And the total master plan, if you recall, is approximately twenty-five miles.
And about that included sections outside the city?
But the majority of the master plan is inside the city, so.
Okay, so that would leave us, quick math, so say about twenty-five miles minus the seven, still leaves us at fourteen.
Yeah, yeah.
Maybe twelve is still, still inside the city.
Yeah.
So that'd be roughly twelve million dollars, twelve to fifteen million dollars?
Maybe more than that.
I just threw out the ballpark, but yes, with a negative economic impact, concrete prices are skyrocketing.
But some of that is in the most expensive, when like the bridge across the interstate is more expensive. I mean, that's not in, I don't know, it's over two million dollars and it's relatively short distance.
Correct.
Some of that is in high-cost areas too, right?
Very difficult areas.
Yeah, and then nothing like the box culverts cost more than just laying concrete and that kind of stuff.
That's a good example, Zach.
Yep, but on average?
Million dollars, yeah.
I'm going with a one, the one point two.
Back in the sixties, you could build interstate about a million dollars an hour.
That's why there were two lanes still.
So next up on this?
I do want to bring your attention. I think you do have in front of you the resolution as well. Yes, from the previous agenda, I know I heard Councilor Carrico at the end of that particular meeting said he wanted to address section one. And I actually wanted to also address section one prior to the draft that we presented at the last meeting. So we have actually amended section one. And we've amended it to clarify and specify what the roles and responsibilities are of both council, the mayor, and myself. And the way we have clarified those roles and responsibilities is basically further chartering the way we operate, whether it's our general fund, our capital fund, our special project funds, that basically this body sets budgets. This body approves amendments to the budget. This body approves contracts and vendors outside of the thresholds of the purchasing procurement policy. City manager via our staff implements for that. And the mayor is obligated, or authorized to sign any type of contract documents approved by this body, any type of reporting to the state agencies, et cetera. So I went ahead and wanted to spell that out, even though it basically mimics what our charter responsibilities are, anyway.
I appreciate that, thank you.
I knew that's where you were going.
It was very vague otherwise.
I knew that's where you were going.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
No, I didn't, because it was a bit vague. This clearly expands it. I appreciate that.
I do have one thing I want to throw out there for conversation. And I know that I've had this conversation with a couple council members. Councilmember Shell at the last meeting made a comment that kind of got me thinking a little bit because he said, because there was a conversation about moving money from one bucket to maybe a bucket for more housing assistance under that particular bucket. Councilmember Shell says, well, we don't really know, why don't we just leave it a third, third, third? And we will reevaluate when those priorities develop and council considers. So I got to thinking, knowing that today's conversation, let's face it, it's going to be a difficult conversation if you sit here today and you try to all agree, develop consensus on how much should go into each of those buckets, right? I think we would not come to a conclusion today, to be honest.
We won't.
Correct.
So something I want to throw out for consideration is, do we go ahead and follow the application process? So something I want to throw out for consideration is, do we go ahead and follow the application process and go ahead and have a call for project proposals from potential partners? That way, we see what those proposals are in front of you from different nonprofits, different organizations, whether it be Newnan Utilities, City of Newnan can go ahead and put our stormwater list together. We can put together a lot of ideas.
That would be so much better, because we could see that stormwater may be $2 million or 1.8 million or.
Quidditch Foundation, Bridging the Gap, Housing Authority, Habitat, Piedmont Hospital, Samaritan Clinic, the pharmacies, whoever it may be, we can have a call for projects and we'll put them in front of you. That way, you know where maybe what the actual dollars mean. Until you see that, I don't know that we're going to get to a conclusion.
It's going to be difficult.
Even that's going to be difficult, because when you have those projects in front of you, there's going to be a point in time where we got to pick winners.
But you have a better idea who you're picking and what you're doing it for.
And you can look at what the true needs are.
And again, looking at the greatest good.
The Community Foundation right now is a recipient of a lot of money. And they're turning around to Bridging the Gap and all the other riverkeepers, those other folks.
And they're also making a state application of a pretty substantial size, right?
Right, and they're turning around and giving that money out. So my question is, is there, I guess, is there an admin with the community foundation? And another admin with the next group? And how much does money get diluted? And would we want to go directly to those organizations rather than through the community foundation, who in turn gives it to someone else? I don't know the answer to that question, but I'd like to know what that cost is. Is this, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mayor, is this kind of heading off a, like a double dipping?
And that's what was my question as well. Can they also apply then for state or county money? On top of all this?
My concern is if we give.
So that we can focus our money.
We give to another and then they get from another. You see what I'm saying? Well, yeah, I mean, and if the state or the federal government has set it up where an organization can make application to two or three different, I mean, that's their deal, not ours.
Well, I know, just.
There's a matching on the state part. So you do have to have some local participation as part of the state grant, so.
For example, and I don't know the specific details, but we will likely see the details once we have a call for projects. The Community Foundation is making a pretty substantial request for the state. There's going to be a local participation in requests, they're both the county and the city as well. I know that for a fact.
So that would actually might be a good place to put some money, because that way we're helping down with reusing this money.
So you may see them utilizing all the resources, which is potentially perfectly fine.
And to the mayor's point, they are doing some direct assistance in addition to going out to the nonprofits, because there are some things that the different nonprofits are offering different things. So for instance, there's a group of volunteers that are coming that aren't bringing money with them, but they're bringing resources and skills to help fix houses. But what they don't have is money for the materials. And so if there's someone that's insured, but is underinsured, but if they can pay for the materials, then the labor will come. So those are some of the out-of-box things that they're all working with to try to figure out how to do that.
See what they, like you said, either their local participation money they're going to need or whatever they might need that we can actually look at.
Well, I guess what I'm saying is, you got a request or proposal from one group who may in turn be a recipient of this other group's money, who in late, you've got a request or proposal from. So how do you know which one and how much? It's complicated. And that was my concern.
You've got to start somewhere.
Yeah, I agree with this process. I mean, I totally understand this process.
Looking at some of the application requirements that the state has set forth, which is a good way for us to start. Does it require an applicant to disclose their other applications from other, from the state or other organizations?
If we can ask that, that would help us to.
HUD often does that, and so does DCA. They often say, how are you getting, what's the full budget, how much are you getting from somebody else?
Right, and that's correct, that's what the state wants. They want a full budget to see what you're going to be using. But match funds are an optional inclusion for the state's applications, if they don't have to include it.
We could require it though.
We could require it.
Yes, it can be required.
Because they put the deadline off on when you report, and we've also said that, say, some of this stuff needs to be long-term, we have to work on a timeframe, and a lengthy timeframe is going to give us more information.
We certainly have time, and we're being advised by the Treasury and also by GMA and other organizations to take our time to get it right. The only thing that GMA has recommended, even though I haven't read it in the Treasury, is they're recommending that we at least have a resolution to accept the dollars and just to just generally earmark the 7.5 as a line item in the budget. That's really all they're asking us to do.
So you can put that on our next agenda?
And that doesn't designate it to any line item, but they are wanting us to accept it. And then the other deadlines are, as Andrew expressed earlier, to earmark it by '24 and spend it by '26?
Yes.
But I would like to have a little bit of a conversation, and it seems like there's going to be some support for that, some conversations around who do we seek? Or do we restrict, for example, individuals from applying? Does it have to be an organization, a nonprofit company? When we go to businesses, are we going to allow individual businesses to submit proposals? Or they must be represented by a certain entity, a chamber or a main street, et cetera? And do we put any limits on the amount, or do we just leave this thing kind of open and see what we get?
Well, then, what kind of auditing requirements are there for any of the recipients?
750,000, anything over 750, we'll require a similar.
I think we'd be foolish to not have our own requirement, I mean, you've got to show.
That's too high for me.
Yeah.
Yeah.
About $100 is where I'd start.
Well, and to go back to Councilman Rhodes, Shell's point. And I just totally lost my thought. Train.
Listen, been there a bunch this week, this only Tuesday. I think that with the number of partners we have, the potential of having here in our community, I really don't see the need in the city getting into individual dispersment. I think that having our partners who do this, as the ones who have the tracking systems, who have the ability to do those metrics, because that's what they do all day, and they got the staff to do that.
I agree to 100%. I just wanted to throw it out there.
Yeah, they know how to do that.
That was what my, tied into what Ms. Shell said. If we're talking about, if we funnel the money through nonprofits and, you know, that type of entity, I would like to also make sure that we use those nonprofits that have minimal administrative costs, not like a 10% administrative costs and larger.
You've got to be part of the review process.
Like 5% or less.
And you can also.
Because there's some that just spend a lot of money on administrative costs and very few of the dollars actually get to where they're intended to go.
That's exactly right.
You can also limit, you can put a provision in, because most grants, and this is coming from a nonprofit executive, most of the grants that we get, they tell us, you can only spend it on, you spend so much administrative, and they define what that is, and, you know, it is what it is.
So could Newman Urban redevelopment make an application?
Well, that's where I'm standing up to ask you your thoughts on. I would like to see, even though we have different boards and commissions, I would like to see them make the applications, that way we can compare their applications, whether it be NURA, whether it be Water and Light Commission, or whether it be DDA. I would like for even the city commissions to participate in the application process, would be my suggestion.
How about the Housing Authority?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Good.
And the Tree Commission, right?
And Tree Commission. I'd like to see them follow that same process. Without that, it would kind of be difficult to do apples-to-apples comparison.
Okay, let me just throw that out here, and I'm not trying to close it out, but if, because I want us to be able, we've got time to talk, we want to. So is everybody okay with the idea of the resolution on our next agenda? Just adopting a resolution, saying we accept the money, period, no buckets? And then also moving forward with the idea that Cletus has brought forward, where we go out to the individuals and ask for grant? Is anybody okay with those two things?
Two, one point to each of those. What was your first bullet? I just want, I just encourage everybody that, do we accept the funds? It's great, it's fine, but if this becomes divisive, I'm almost to the point where I'd say, let's just send the money right back. We don't need to be divisive amongst ourselves, and this becomes an argumentative thing. Again, with success, oftentimes comes all these other problems. It's not worth it, to me personally, for us to lose ourselves as a city and as a community, as a council, over money, it's just not worth it.
I agree.
The second point to that was the maintaining our focus. I like the application, we can take a look at all that stuff. $7 million doesn't go very far anymore. It's going to be very easy to spread out a little bit everywhere where it becomes really useless anywhere. And just try to keep a focus, especially since they can be making county and state federal applications for other monies, and not to discount, you know, what we can do in matching or whatever, because there is a vital point, piece to that. But just not spreading ourselves so thin is pretty much useless then.
Can I make a comment? We will have the abilities, an application comes before us, and let's say they're asking for 500,000, for example. Based upon that, we can have a discussion as to, based upon allocation of funds and what's available, et cetera. We could say, you know, we can afford to give you, or so, 250, is that permissible? Is that going to be part of the process?
That would certainly be permissible, but as Councilman Carrico said, then you got to ask yourself, are you hamstringing that particular request to the point that they can't deliver their services in the application? But it would be permissible.
Well, I mean, in all fairness, most people are really going to, they're going to, I almost say most, there's probably not the right way to put it, may pad it in order enough with, leaves room for some negotiation perhaps.
One thing that I don't have an answer for you, and you haven't asked this question, is what is this process going to look like? I don't know that I have an answer yet, because number one, I don't know how many applications we're going to receive.
We're going to get a lot.
You know, in a standard RFP or RFQ, again, back to standard operating procedure, staff's going to come for those project or those proposals. We're going to put together a little review committee and present it to council as a recommendation. This may be a little bit different considering complexities behind this, but I will be thinking through what that process is as to whether or not we have work sessions to review each and every one, or whether we have qualifiers, and we first determine whether or not that particular request is eligible and meets certain criteria, and you only see those. But those are the things that we're going to have to be thinking through, if you have any ideas. Certainly want to have those conversations, because this may be different than just simply awarding a contract for architectural services.
I'd like to encourage that we do have widest dissemination on this.
Right, I agree.
County actually has a survey out for how they foresee spending their funds. Not to say we need to do that, but we do need to make sure we cover.
What I'm going to do, Quidditch County's survey closes today, even though I already have the preliminary results, I'm not going to share. We contemplated putting out a survey, but let's be honest, the survey asks the exact same questions that we ask. There's no restrictions on who can answer their survey, the same funding categories.
I don't want to say no surveys.
I'm going to share you their data after they close us today, because our answers would be basically the same if you were to put something out.
Sure.
So I will share that data with you.
Well, I, go ahead. Well, I like the idea of also reviewing or having restrictions. I've dealt with some nonprofits, and I've seen some nonprofits where they'll have administrative costs of 40, 50, 60%, and you think, okay, what are they really accomplishing? Are they, so, but I like all these ideas that everybody's bringing forth.
So my question is, Mr. City Manager, with all these things coming forth, are we going to have to bring on additional staff? Is Andrew the staff? Or what are your thoughts on that? And how's it going to affect us budgetary-wise?
Give Andrew another $13.
Yeah, we may have to. We have purposely tried to keep Andrew's focus on ARPA. We know at some point in time, when the program is up and running, he's probably going to, there's going to be times where he's just unbelievably busy. Once the program gets running, he's going to have some resources that we may be able to assign him to other responsibilities, but I don't want to speak for Andrew, but I believe right now we got some capacity. He has the capacity to handle this process. He's already been working towards this call for projects. I'm more so concerned about the amount of volume and the time it's going to take. Let's say we theoretically, and I don't want to guess, get 30 applications, which.
He's very conceivable.
What's your guess?
I wouldn't be surprised if we had more than that.
Yeah, me too, me too. It's going to be a lot of work for this body.
So you're going to limit them into what geographic area? The blue area? The work has to be done within that blue area?
No.
Anywhere in the city limits, but it's got to be city limits.
Oh, I think they've got to provide a service in the city, because that's our dollars, right?
Right.
That's right, they have a, if they, I believe if they come in and they have a program that doesn't touch the city, I mean, that priority is going to go straight to the bottom, right?
Yeah, right, or just in the trash can.
Interest will likely be extremely high, especially amongst those nonprofit organizations. I can speak after meeting with many of them. Most of them are already alerted that this would possibly be a process, and they've been alerted that there will be some sort of application process, and there's high interest, very high interest.
Okay, so do we take the revenue loss number, the one points up off the top?
Again, I think that goes back to the conversation we look at for all. As you said, you know, our financials, despite the tornado expenses are strong. I think if we see some projects that have a high priority, which may not allow us to take the revenue in 2022, therefore, maybe that's a strong consideration. But one thing that the revenue replacement may do this year, and I heard Councilman Carrico talk about, you know, hazard pay and essential employees, and that all employees have been fighting COVID to a certain extent. And while there certainly is truth that we're a team pulling together when it comes to classifying essential employees, there are certainly some restrictions on how we could give premium pay or bonuses to the entire staff. But if you use the revenue replacement, then we got a lot more flexibility to do work with all of our staff.
That's right.
So we're not taking off the table, but let's not get too quick to discuss.
What's your estimate of our true out-of-pocket after we get reimbursed on FEMA? Because FEMA's 75, you said the state's going to pick up.
12 and a half. We're trending right now towards the end of the year, about $8 million expense responding to the tornado. We may end up with that number being closer to 10 million when we're all said and done. If we get.
1.25.
There you go. Well, there'll probably be a little bit more than that out of pocket, because there are some of that $10 million that will not be eligible. So you could probably estimate around $2 million would be our out-of-pocket expense once we're all said and done and the books are closed on it.
Which will be years from now.
Could be a while, and you're subject to audits for many, many, many years.
That's all right. Anything else?
Thank you, Andrew.
You're welcome. I do want to add one more key point about the nonprofit section as well that I accidentally left out. Treasury has defined in the interim final rule that nonprofits are specifically limited to 501(c)(3). That whole 501 chapter, it's just those specific organizations.
No (c)(6) is.
Yes, exactly, it's very, very definitive in the interim final rule.
Things change rapidly. We keep referencing interim final ruling.
Yes.
Any date updates yet on the final ruling?
Well, it was supposed to come out in August, and it did not. So no, there is no estimated date on when that's going to come out, and truthfully, it could never come out. So right now, the interim final rule is that final guidance that we're going to use, and what Treasury says we have to use.
Okay, I have one more thing that's not related to this, right after we adjourn. So I just ask you to stay in your seat for just a second. So are we done with the?
I do want to, even though we want to move quickly, we're under no immediate pressures. So for us to get this process out correctly, professionally, so that everyone can understand and have a chance to respond, and I wouldn't certainly expect the proposals to be back in front of council in 30 days. So, you know, that's probably not going to happen. We will work diligently to get that out. Is there anything else you want to see before that request for application hits the streets? Because we're pretty much going to follow the state guidelines as far as the applications. We'll tweak a few areas for some requirements, but for the most part, we'll follow something very, very, very simple.
Now, many of them have asked if there were going to be any specific limits to the request amount. Do we want to? Do we want to establish a set limit, minimum, maximum, that those organizations can request? That they have a definitive number?
And that's the reason why I was asking if we were going to take revenue replacement off the top. Because if you take it off the top, then you know what you got left to deal with. But if you get into the bigger bucket, and then all of a sudden you go, okay, well, where did the revenue replacement go? Well, we just gave it away. Yeah, so we'd just like your opinion on what, it doesn't have to be the full amount, but if you.
Well, I still believe we're in a very, very, very strong financial position. I don't think it needs to be the full amount. I think there's higher priorities in the in the community for dollars. But I certainly think if we're going to go the route of some premium pay for our essential employees, we need to go a similar route for all employees, and that is needs to come out of that particular bucket, in my opinion.
Yeah.
I need to calculate some numbers.
Whatever that number is. Let us know what that number is.
I need to calculate some numbers in the process and let you know. But I have had a conversation with a couple of council members of, do we put a cap on the request? And, you know, there's one theory that we may be putting a lid on ideas and creativity. There's another train of thought, but yeah, but then again, you start getting people asking for seven and a half million dollars.
The thing is, with that, they request to the room.
That's right.
We're going to have to give them what we want to give them.
That's kind of where I am at, but.
And I think that this will give us an opportunity to see what some of the needs are in our community that we haven't necessarily identified yet. So it's not that we, this is, I think this will be good data for us in our community to know what what some of those needs are out there. And we're gathering that data. And even if we don't end up giving them the money, it might open the eyes up to our business community, to other resources that are in our community to help our nonprofit community and our agencies and whoever else is going to apply to see what we need.
Because I know, going back to infrastructure, I guarantee you, I could come in here in 24 hours and put you a list together that parks each other's, and I don't have to get all.
Can you have us that list?
No, they are not.
So any smart application is going to be itemized by projects. Right. So you could say, yes, we like this application for projects one, two, and three, but not four, five, and six. So guidance, yeah? Okay, anything else? All right, so we'll adjourn this, and we've got, as you all know, Mr. Sears, an item on our agenda today that is a hearing for an application violation on alcohol. So because that's not a public hearing, it's not a normal situation, step the council through one more, a refresher on what, who we are when we have that hearing.
Well, you're essentially under sit as the judge and the jury. It's not a trial per se in the, in this particular instance. But normally, the burden would be on the city to show that a violation had occurred. We would, if you recall from the last time, we would present witnesses. And then you would make a determination as to whether or not the activity did in fact violate the alcohol ordinance. Now, in those particular instances, what you have are violations of the ordinance itself, ordinance provisions in the furnishing, selling, reporting of alcoholic beverages, or the violation of certain state alcohol laws that also getting into, in other words, while it's part of ours selling to someone under 21, it's also a state offense. All right. In this particular instance, one of the things that we have is that you cannot have been convicted of a alcohol violation within a five-year period. All right, so we'd look at that on the application side. Now, if someone gets convicted on the other side, once the license is issued, then that violation comes before you, and you would make a determination as to whether or not the license because of that violation should be suspended, revoked, or fined. Now, of course, what what your options there are several. Of course, you can do nothing depending on what the violation is and just give a warning. You can determine that the violation is not subject to a suspension, but you can place them on probation for a period of time that there's any violation, again, within a period of time that you would bring them back in at that point in time, go through the thing. And that possibly could lead to a long-term suspension or and/or revocation. And then, of course, the fourth thing you could do is go ahead and put it on probation, enter a fine. Well, you can enter the fine, we changed the ordinance several years ago, you can enter a fine up to $1,000. No, is it $1,000 per offense? Which I think Mr. Carricko had recommended a $2,500 fine in the one that was before you before. But that was because there were multiple offenses. This one is a little, particularly a little different, because it is not related to the operation of the business. This particular one is simply a violation of a DUI under state law. And of course, when, the issue is, when you fill out, it always comes up. Because when you have to fill out the renewal, you have to say whether or not you've had a violation like that. You swear that you haven't. And that puts the person in an awkward position at the renewal period to have to perhaps surrender the license. It would not be issued, it would have to come before you. So in this particular instance, this particular individual through his attorney made the contact to the city to want to go ahead and, you know, come up here and have it taken care of prior to the renewal period coming up. Because if the renewal period came up, then staff cannot issue the license. And then it would take longer for it perhaps to be reinstated. All right, so here, in this particular instance, I expect that, you know, unless something strange occurred, that the individual through his attorney will come in and just say, you know, we've got this DUI, and we, you know, put ourselves before the council as to the council's decision as to what to do with regard to the license. In this particular instance, I think that you'll hear from the attorney that this didn't even occur at the business. It was on a holiday, it was from somewhere else. It wasn't like we've had some in the past where the individual, you know, was imbibing at work and picked up the DUI after they closed the restaurant. That was many years ago that we had that particular one. And so in that, so that's, this is why it's a little different. So I will not be putting on a case, as I have in the past. This will be set in admission that a guilty plea was entered to a DUI. And so then it's up to council to determine, decide at that point in time what appropriate penalty should be involved. So this is a little different because of the fact that I'm not proving anything.
Right. So just wanted to have him say those words to give us some clarity before we went into the hearing. I thought it would be easier now than.
Do you have information on our precedents for any of that? What we've done in the past?
We haven't had one like this. In other words, the only one that was somewhat similar, as I said, occurred at a location where there was some other stuff going on. That particular individual who's a manager of the business got stopped for DUI. At the same time, they went in and leveled other cell, underage sales, some other stuff. So that's why I said, that's the only other time that we've had one like that. Now, we'll suspect that a lot of times, or surmise, that when you see some of these license representative changes that you see coming down the path, is that what has happened is a license rep has gotten picked up for DUI. It'll be coming to us, you know, in this primary with the national change and all. Now, some of them are employee changes, but some of them, of course, when the new one comes in, the transfer is done, we don't ever go back and look at why that change was made. It simply says a change in the license rep. So it may have occurred before. This just is the first time we ever had where it's the licensee and there is no license rep.
Okay, so, everybody good? All right, we're. What's your name?